At this time, I'll call the May 27th, 2021 meeting to order for the Dixon County Commission. Would you please stand and join in the flag salute? Flag allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, the next item we have is the approval of the agenda. I do not believe there are any items to add to the agenda. And so knowing that, I would move that we approve the agenda as printed.
I'll second that.
We have the motion and the second for approval of the agenda. Any other discussion or comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The consent agenda includes the minutes of the May 20th meeting. It also includes payroll of $422,272.32 and abatements of $1,536.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have the motion and the second for approval of the consent agenda. Any other question or comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We'll go to commission comments. Ron?
No comments today.
Okay, Craig?
Just, I had a couple of calls and then a couple of texts about the Brookville not being on the, being able to sell due, not being able to reach and agree with the months and stuff. And I think we're going to address that with the, what caused that to happen.
Okay, well, and if, um, yes, we can, we can do that. If there, I know there was something in the newspaper about it. And I guess procedurally, there's a process. I, Doug, do you want to make any comment on that at this time? Just as far as clarity is concerned, I?
Well, we haven't had anything come up with the past due real estate taxes on Brookville property. Now, by that same token, they may be in a rear for real estate taxes. But as county councilor, what I deal with is when the property is three years delinquent, because that's what I have to, three years delinquent thereafter, we move forward with foreclosures on any and all pieces of property that fall into that category. Well, if you recall the last year when we were doing this, we haven't had a tax sale now for a while because of the virus. And so we were geared up to do the tax sale. The Brookville property wasn't on that. So they weren't in that timeframe that we're talking about. Doesn't mean they weren't three years behind. We operate at four years. So when you're three years behind, we start the process of moving forward with foreclosure. And so we would sell off a parcel or all of the parcels of property and that are delinquent for that timeframe. And then the next year, we would do the same, those that are three years behind. So the one we would have been doing was 2015, but that one's been delayed twice now. And now we're gearing back up again to go to the, the third time for that same sale. And that will be hopefully in October, November of this year. So when the governor, when initially why, because of the virus, couldn't remove people from homes and then, so we had withdrawal. And then the second time, the federal government had extended time for any governmental entity. That would have been some of the homes are SBA loans or other government loans. And so we're not able to move forward with that. Now that's being lifted. So all of that paperwork that we did before, twice, now we're redoing that. It goes back to the two title companies. We divide that between the two title companies to give reports. When those reports come back, then I will prepare all of those pleadings, file those with the court, with the district court. And, and all of those people who are named as defendants, which are not only the people, but anybody with liens on the property, such as banks and so forth. And they will get notification that we're going to foreclose on them. And those individuals or those companies that are interested in the property, they have until 4:00 PM the day before the tax sale to pay it. And if they don't, then it's too late. The next day we sell it and the bank liens and so forth are extinguished. And so if the bank's going to take an action or somebody else going to take an action, they would proceed with a foreclosure and to take the property back pursuant to their contract with the, with the borrowers. And so that's the way that part would take place. We're not involved in any of that. So if this Brookville property, if this comes up after we do this tax sale, if it comes up in the next one, it'll be just like John Doe's property. And the notice will be provided. That person will have an opportunity to file an answer to the pleadings to come into court and show why there's a mistake, why their taxes are not passed due. And assuming that they're not able to do that, it will be a judgment granted in favor of the county and we will move forward with the foreclosure. So that's the way that the process works. The process has been delayed two times. Now we're into the cycle that we would have been a full year later. We would have done the 15 tax sale already and the 16 tax sale and we would be on the 17, but that's where we are.
And procedurally, there is a process and I don't think there's any attempt just to try to single out one person or entity or business or whatever. But it has become more of a discussion because the Abilene Reflector Chronicle did have a front page article on it. And I think one of the news stations has had comments on it and parties involved have both made some statements and so on. So, you know, we're not trying to sort through all of that, but, but procedurally, Doug, I appreciate your comments because the county and the state and everyone involved has a process they go through and?
It's set by statute. So we're following our statutes.
And the intent is, we like to see all properties, you know, stepping up and paying their fair share and if it's, you know, so it's just part of the process.
Can I summarize though? If we had properties that was only worth $10, it would have, the same procedure would have been followed. So just, you know, this was a high profile that brought us to attention.
Same, same procedure all the way up.
Yeah.
And if you've been to the tax sales before, we have some property that is contested, meaning that there's a neighbor on one side wants it and it may even come in higher than the taxes that are due. And we turn around and have to refund, have to, but we do because we're required to refund the excess, excess that goes back in a setting such as that. We also have properties come in, there's a $60,000 house and it gets sold for $10 at the tax sale. And that's, that's, it's a public sale.
And you might also, the people can't buy it back themselves.
They cannot buy their property back. They can't be $100 behind in taxes and come in and say, okay, I buy it back for $10 from the lemonade. They can't, and their immediate family cannot come in and purchase it.
Okay, thank you. And I do not have anything to report in particular. And so we're going to go ahead and move on to public comments because we do not have any petitions today or proclamations. And so if there's anything that does not happen to be on the agenda at this time, we'll go ahead and have a comment. And I know Don Hammett has joined us online. And so, Don, we're glad to hear from you and welcome to our meeting.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you this morning. I appreciate it greatly. Everything moved really quickly last week. I wasn't able to give you a heads up, but we did get approval to reopen the museum exhibits. It's limited capacity, limited days of the week of Wednesday through Saturday right now, 10 to 2. And we do have timed tickets that are required. This is helping us with some crowd management and of course with touchless payment. We are working towards expanding the days and expanding the hours. I have already requested the addition of the place of meditation to reopen the place of meditation to the public. And I'm waiting to hear back from Washington DC on that plan. So we're, we're in a place where we're expecting a lot of information from Washington to come down to us quickly. And we're expecting a lot of quick changes in the next several weeks. And I just wanted to let you know that, that that's in the works.
Well, thank you very much and appreciate all that you've done. And I guess we are starting to have a few people come into town that specifically want to see the library and the museum. Now, the library as far as researchers, are they able to access that yet or?
No, the researchers are not allowed in the library as of yet. That's another change that we're expecting very soon. We're expecting to get some guidance from Washington DC about how to safely have researchers in our spaces. So I'm expecting research room information very quickly. I'm expecting an expansion of the times and days very, very soon. I'm really, I'm actually very optimistic that we're going to have a lot of changes in the next several weeks.
Okay. Just one thing for clarification. You know, a lot of times we hear things from Meredith Sletter. And so kind of what's the difference between what she does and what you do? And maybe the importance of the Friends of the Foundation or Eisenhower? If you can just summarize that just for public information.
That is a great question. Thank you for asking. So the Eisenhower Presidential Library is a federal agency, a federal entity under the National Archives and Records Administration agency. I am a federal employee. Meredith is part of the Eisenhower Foundation, which is a private 501(c)(3) organization. The Eisenhower Foundation has several missions, one of which is to support the Eisenhower Presidential Library with public programming and exhibits. So we, we have a tandem mission, but we don't exactly do the same thing.
Okay, thank you. Any question or comment from the commission?
Thank you.
Well, maybe hear from you again in a month or so. And maybe you'll have some additional good news and appreciate what you're doing and glad that it's open on a limited basis.
Thank you. We're very, we're very ready to welcome our guests. I appreciate your patience and your kindness.
Is there anyone else online that has joined us that would want to make a comment on anything that is not on the agenda? I know some are interested in the 30 by 30 plan, which will come up a little bit later. And also the NHA, which will come up later. But is there any other individuals that would want to make comment that have joined us online? And I know we do have the Reflector Chronicle is observing us online, which is glad to have you. We did have a quick question from Megan Armstrong. It comes out Lori Megan Armstrong, and I'm never sure whether to say both or if you go by one over the other.
Thank you, Lynn. I, so my name is Lori Megan Armstrong and I, most people know me as Megan, but I've had to clarify what my full name is for other sake of other things. So I apologize for the confusion and hopefully over time we'll get it sorted out. But like Lynn said, my name is Lori Megan Armstrong. I live at 1173 Old Forty, Abilene, Kansas. I was hoping to find out from Dawn, since we got her on the line. I appreciate you getting her here today. How can the community assist in expanding the hours? I've spoken with Senator Moran and he has written and he has talked and he has really pushed to have the Eisenhower Center open. Is there anything that we can do as a community to assist you in getting that open and getting Congress to really make a move? Because our, the backbone of our economy downtown really revolves around the Eisenhower Center. So I would like to assist in any way, if the community can, would like to do that. If you have any information to share that way, please.
Megan, that is incredibly kind and I'm very, very grateful. We actually have had correspondence with the Senator. Our team in Washington is working with his team in Washington as well as we move forward. I would very much like to put your thought on the table when I talk to Meredith Sletter and see if there is something creative that we can come up with. That is very sweet and I'm very thankful for that.
Thank you, ma'am.
And I know Julie Roller Weeks has kind of reached out and, and also, you know, gets information out and so, but yes, I think probably if we just reach out to the Senator and, but there is kind of limit what we can do, but, but we certainly keep their attention.
We've been in, we've been in contact with the Senator's office, both Senator's offices as a matter of fact. So he's, he's aware of the situation and he is working for Abilene, I promise.
Very good, thank you. Are there any other comments? There do not appear to be any further as far as public comment. So we will go ahead and move on from public comment to our reports of county officers. Typically Brad Holman gives the report for the administrative part and he is absent today. And so Janelle is here to take charge of that.
Thank you. So just briefly, the county has received their first share of the American Rescue Recovery Act monies. That's 1.793 million. The next share should be arriving a year from now, which has been, it's nice that we have that and we'll start working on the processes as we're going to allocate that monies. The Board of Commissioners have been, reservations have been made for the Overland Park meeting for the KAC Annual Conference. That's in October. We've got, I handed out a brief overview of updated rules for our meeting and it is on the county website. So due to the current renovation of courthouse, the commission is holding its weekly meetings here at the Health Department at 1001 North Brady. There's limited space here for the public to attend, but it will be open for public attendance. We ask that if you do plan on attending that you notify Barb Jones, our county clerk, to make sure that there is room available. But we are encouraging, encouraging you to meet virtually and utilizing the, the go-to meeting and that's listed on the website. So you can either access it by computer or smartphone, either way. Martin, I spoke with him briefly this morning and an update on the paving project. He started on Hawk Road on Monday. They are averaging about 6,000 feet a day and he hopes to have the four miles of Hawk Road completed by the end of next week. That's Highway 18 to 3400 Avenue. We were awarded 50% funding for the 1145 First Road Bridge Replacement. This is a partnership, it's a cost share program with the state of Kansas. It's a component of the Eisenhower Legacy Transportation Program or IC. The estimated bridge replacement is 1.2 million. So the county's share is 624,000. And with that, we are in partnership with Clay County. And actually our share will be about 450,000 and Clay's, Clay County's will be about 175. So it's a, it's a good program for us.
You might mention the age of the bridge.
The age of the bridge is well over 50 years. I don't know if I have that on the list, exactly how old it is, but it's actually 83 years old. 83 years old. So he's got twelve beaten, working on survey plans to get the bridge at 1510 Rain Road out to bid as soon as possible. That's the next bridge that we prioritized. And then he's got a rough estimate or a list of bridges throughout the county. There's 10 of them that we've identified that need either replacement or a deck replacement on that. And he is working on a survey stage at the 510-800 Avenue, which is an off system bridge. It's a partnership, would be an 80/20 match. The other thing that had happened earlier this year in the spring is we had a lightning strike on some radio equipment and we filed an insurance claim with K-Camp, our insurance provider. It damaged the Link antenna and this affected some areas in the southern part of the county. Woodbine and Navarre and Harrington is now up and running, but we expect to receive payment from K-Camp in the amount of $5,597 and that is less our deductible. So that should be it.
You might mention to the, well, I guess I will, since I've read that, the 10 bridges is about 7.2 million at this time, those costs.
Yes.
So if the commission in future might have some hard decisions to make whether to place those structures or not, depending on where they're at, because we don't have that kind of money.
We don't, no. And these are all bridges that are in the, the youngest bridge, so to speak, is 65 years of age up to 83. So there's, they, they've lived their useful life, I guess, but it's, it's time to, to work on the replacement program with them, so.
Okay, thank you. Before we go to Doug, I will mention that earlier today, we did have continued our budget hearings and had the Historical Society in and also the Central Kansas Mental Health that came in to give us their proposals. Doug, do you have anything for us?
Well, I just want to mention before, but we're also working on the tax sale that we want to try and do for, my best guess will be October or November, which would be for the 15, 2015 tax sale, two years before, have been delayed by a reason of the virus. And so that's our plan is to do one tax sale this year, late fall, and another one by either late spring or early summer. And that would be the 16. And then we'll keep moving until we get back up within the three years and we allow one more, so within the four year period of time for past due taxes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Barb, do you have a copy of the resolutions that we're looking at? And I don't know if you filled out the resolution numbers on those yet.
And I, I marked Jim May's in the motion.
Okay.
Make a note that they, the month needs to be changed.
Thank you. Before we get to that portion, as far as notices and communications, we did receive solicitation or opportunity to do work with a LED lighting company out of Oklahoma and wanted us to be aware of some of the savings that can take place. And of course that reminded me that out here on Interstate, we're finally having some work done to improve the lighting there. And, you know, at the time, probably three years or so ago, well, there'd been numerous attempts to reach out to KDOT and they had funding issues and, and they have their priorities and so on, but from the safety standpoint, but also where people would recognize the, the interchange and not drive past it, because they expected to be a little bit more well lit when it's an intersection of two highways. We had visited with KDOT and I know Brad had reached out and they happened to, KDOT people were at a regional meeting that we had here. And so we were able to talk to some of them in the group that were outside of our specific area. And, and at the same time, the Abilene Reflector Chronicle, that very same day, had an article about it saying we need something done out there. And we were able to show that to them, which really kind of got their attention. And so a lot of people have been working on it over the years. And they kind of said, well, we're going to move you up. It's probably five years out or four and maybe we'll do it in two or three years. But anyway, finally, it's been a couple of years now and they're doing some work on it. So Janelle, you probably know more about it than I do, so.
You, you answered it there, so you did, you did excellent.
But, but you know, really it was, it was a, an effort of a lot of individuals, you know, from the state legislator, legislature to the, you know, local people here. And I know Brad had reached out to them and then we had reached out to them and had a lot of direct communication with KDOT. And so we maybe got it moved up a little bit on their schedule, but, but it is being done.
Good news.
Safety and, and having things lit up really helped. Okay, we do not have any other items on communications other than we have received quite a bit of information and emails in regards to the resolutions that are on the agenda. And so we're going to go ahead and, and get to that part. So the first resolution is to consider is one, objecting to President Joe Biden's 30 by 30. And it was an executive order. And we have a resolution in regards to that. And, and the one thing that I might mention, we had on the resolution and probably was on the website this way, that it was passed on the 27th day of June. And so we're going to correct that because this is a May meeting. But, but having said that, Janelle, would you want to give a little bit of a summary of that? I like that. And we do have some people here that are wanting to speak to that issue too.
So the resolution is opposing the federal government's 30 by 30 land preservation goal. In January, President Biden had issued an executive order stating that he wanted to develop a program to conserve at least 30% of the lands and waters in the United States by 2030, which is called the 2030 Project. And that's some 680 million acres in our nation's land that will be set aside to preserve in its natural state, preventing productive use of these lands and the resources. And the commission is, we're asking that, or the commission is being asked to sign this because we feel like that there's significant harm to the economy, economy of Dickinson County and it could injure the county's businesses and citizens. And there's nothing in the constitutional, in the constitution or any statutory authority, you know, for the president, the Department of Interior, or the Department of Ag, or any other federal agency to set aside and permanently preserve that 30% of the land. So we're asking that, as a commission, that this be adopted.
And I know some of the people I've heard from have mentioned that, rightly so, that a lot of people that they have the farms and, and pasture land and, and for various uses and they're really already preservationists and conservationists just by the way they take care of the land. And they've done that for generations as far as farming here in Dixon County. And we don't need to have something formalized from Washington DC to, to reach that objective. Is there anyone, any question or comment that anyone from the commission would want to make? And before we consider a resolution or a motion on it, there may be some public comment we'd want to hear.
I don't have any.
And, and we can't comment beyond that, but is there anyone online or here that would want to make any comment? If so, just give your name and address and kind of hit the high point, because I know we could have a hour long discussion, but we do have a limit on time, typically five minutes or less.
I didn't come here to speak on the 3030, but I'm appreciative of you to have this resolution in front of you, the 3030 plan that is proposed is invasive to agriculture. And I should have stated, my name's Kevin Harris, 12th and 7th Highway 15. Sorry about that.
That's fine.
And so by this situation, I think producers also need to be aware of, and I mentioned it earlier, of all avenues that they might use to obtain this, which could include new types of CRP type of programs and those types of things. So I think it's good that we're, we're standing that this is not something that we want to see happen. And I think we have to be keenly aware of how they might be going about doing this. So this resolution at least helped if we're standing with our senators or congressmen and that who have also said, hey, now we don't want this. So appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments on this particular one? We would proceed to the next resolution. Before we go to the next resolution, we need to consider a motion, formalize that.
You want to read it, Lynn?
You want me to read the?
Yes.
The entire portion of it?
Sure.
It's.
You can summarize it.
Okay.
Just highlight, how's that?
And, and I will.
People out here aren't going to have a resolution.
Okay, no, no. And actually that is good to, and some of this repeats a little bit what Janelle had said. But this was a resolution that as Dixon County, we would oppose the federal government's 30 by 30 land preservation goal. And it was whereas on January 27th, 2021, President Joseph Biden Jr. issued an executive order, 14008, entitled "Tackling the Climate Crisis at Home and Abroad." And, and so what this is doing is that the President Biden had directed the Secretary of the Interior in consultation with the Secretary of Agriculture and other senior officials to develop a program to conserve at least 30% of the lands and waterways in the United States by 2030. And they called it the 3030 program. It's a 3030 program which involves 680 million acres of our nation's lands that would be set aside and permanently preserved in its natural state, preventing the productive use of these lands and their resources. And so, so I think a little bit what that involves, you know, I always think, for example, the, you know, Rocky Mountains and I'm, and you're glad in a way that there was some preservation there, but you know, there's a limit. preservation there, but, you know, there's a limit on what do you want for parks, what do you want for preservation, what do you want for governmental control? And, and so it's a little bit of a challenge as far as property rights have to be concerned. And so, so I think in summary, that's what this addresses, that even though it kind of sounds good preservation, it's, it's also the property rights and individual rights are impacted, and, and probably in a way that we would not want them impacted. So I'm kind of editorializing here a little bit, too. So are there questions or additional information in regards?
Lynn, what's the resolution, what's the resolution number on that?
The resolution number is 052721.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt 052721.
Second.
Okay, we have the motion and the second to adopt Resolution 052721. And basically, that is a resolution to oppose the federal government's 30 by 30 land preservation. Any other discussion or comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. And this is one that will take all three of our signatures. And I mentioned earlier is that we are putting the date as May 27th on this, and we'll get that typo correct. The next resolution we have to consider, this is a resolution to oppose the inclusion of the National Heritage Area Designated Region. There was a meeting in Dickinson County out at the Hitching Post of Abilene, and I know lots of people attended that meeting, and the information and background was given at that meeting. And, and you could tell there were many in attendance, you know, from our, our county, and there were a few that were surrounding counties, because they had meetings like that. They had one in Clay County, they had one in Lincoln County of Vesper, and, and so sometimes people from other counties were unable to attend the, their particular meeting. But, but you could tell that it was a strong consensus, if, if not unanimous, that, that our citizens and farmers and ranchers, property owners, were not comfortable with the National Heritage Area. And we do have that resolution to oppose the inclusion of Dixon County within the National Heritage Area, which is designated, it was part of a Kansas-Nebraska Heritage Area Partnership, and it encompassed 49 counties, 26 in Kansas. We were part of the southern border, so I believe it was Riley County, Gary County, Dixon, Sleen County, Ellsworth, Russell, Ellis, and Trejo, and maybe I left one out, but then everything to the north on up to the Nebraska border were included in that. So I know there are some that were with us in our work-study session, and if there were any comments or summary statements anyone would want to make, this would be opportunity to do so online, or we have three people in person here also. So we'd want your name and address, and kind of the same format that we've done all along. And the, yeah. So there's, I don't have any comment online, but of the three of you that are here, is there someone representing the group or someone that would want to make a comment? Or a couple of you could, for that matter, too.
I, again, Kevin Harris, 1207 Highway 15, Abilene. I'm just here today to deliver basically petition process to opt out of the Kansas-Nebraska Heritage, writing signatures of 260 that are opposed to this. There are just, at this point, a lot of leeryness of anything, of designating land into any kind of a program, and it was very well heard throughout this last three to four days from everybody who was collecting this. And so just, just wanted to share that, that that's what was delivered on this part. Turn it over to the more experts if they want to.
I gave you an excellent, well, I think it was.
This is Angel.
No, sorry, I'm sorry. Angel Cushing from Lang County, Kansas. I was here during a work session, and I left a great deal of homework. I appreciate you all having us here today and talking to us. I don't know that I could add anything more to what I said this morning at the work session, other than to reiterate that I am personally not against National Heritage Areas. I am against having a National Heritage Area over farmland.
Thank you. And I know kind of from our conversation between our work-study session and a couple of you have mentioned, visited with you, that you encourage people to reach out to us, which they did. They saw us, we had emails, we had some text messages, but, but also you had encouraged them in a respectful way, and I'm kind of old-fashioned, I'm kind of, you know, sometimes we can have disagreements and disagree, but I think it's just important to factually state your opinion and, and, you know, have it be a discussion. And, but I appreciated the comments and, and pretty much agreed with, in principle, with what the comments were. Are there any comments from the Commission? Or questions? The resolution on this is 052721A. And, and I think some of the summary of it is that it, the designation invites interference in local affairs by special interest groups who claim to be stakeholders. And one of the concerns is some of the people that would be making some of the decisions or have some control were people that really are not familiar with our area, and it goes back to personal property rights and letting people in our county just maintain some of the control they have and not have it taken away.
I'll make a motion to accept 052721A.
Okay. Is there a second on that?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have the motion, and we have the second to adopt Resolution 052721A. This is a resolution opposing the inclusion of Dixon County within the National Heritage Area Designated Region. Any other question or comment from the Commission? Otherwise, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, and it's unanimous, and so appreciate all the hard work that all of you have done, and reaching out and kind of organizing some of the efforts within the county and within the region, so. You can add another county to the list. You're allowed to clap, we're like.
Can we yell, yeah? Number 23.
Okay. Michael Jordan, so.
There you go.
I don't know how that relates here, but.
We need to sign that, Lynn.
Yes, yes, we do need signatures. That will make it actually official. And you're welcome to stay, other than it's going to be very brief, so you're only have to hang with us another three or four minutes. I do not believe we have anything else.
No.
To discuss or to act on. We do not have any unfinished business or other business, and we have all the signatures in place, and, and so we've got everything officially done, Barb. She keeps us in line, so.
I move adjourned.
I'll second that.
We have the motion and the second to adjourn. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries, we're adjourned.